I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Clemens?
Present.
Counselor Landevan?
Excused.
Counselor Livingston?
Excused.
Counselor McCucci?
Present.
Counselor McDonald?
Present.
Counselor Nicola?
Present.
Counselor Regis?
Present.
Counselor Spinelli?
Present.
Counselor Vandal?
Present.
Seven present, two excused.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the council minutes of Monday, December 19th, 2011 meeting.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Clemens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to make a note that on page 12, Agenda Item Number 17, which was the vote to authorize the sweeper, which then culminated in a vote on page 17, I was not included in that vote. When I was here and I did vote, but my name does not show up in there. So, being that that was a relatively important vote, if we could just correct the minutes to include me in the vote?
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have any other discussion on this? Okay. All in favor? Council minutes? It's unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports, A General Government. Counselor Spinelli?
Madam Chair, I have no minutes and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. DPW, Counselor Vandal?
Madam Chair, no minutes and no meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services. Counselor Clemens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no minutes and there's a meeting coming up in March, but potentially something sooner than that, so we'll just wait until we have more.
Okay. Thank you. D, Planning and Development. We do have a meeting scheduled for that. There are no minutes to read, but Counselor Livingston does have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday, January 12th, at 7:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room. E is Protection of Persons and Property, and I don't see any meetings scheduled and there are no minutes. Chairwoman's Announcements. There will be the first meeting of the Bylaw Review Committee. That is scheduled for tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room. I hope everybody had a happy, healthy holiday and wish you all a Happy New Year. At this point, I don't have anything else. I'd like to turn it over to the Town Manager. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have several things this evening that I would like to cover. I endeavor to go efficiently here. The first is I have received a material from the Town Clerk's Office that they sent out a notice. And just to read the notice, the Town of Southbridge will once again be conducting a census by mail to all residents of the town. All Southbridge households will receive a census form in the mail as mandated by Massachusetts' general law, which states that an annual street list of residents as of January 1st of each year be conducted. When you receive the census form, please be sure to complete all the information requested, that is, last name, first name, and middle initial of each member of the household, including children, so on and so forth. This is something that the annual street list or the census should be completed by the head of the household, signed and dated. It is very important that all residents respond to this annual census. The population of the city and town is very important in determining what grants the town may receive or be eligible for, as well as its benefit to the elderly and student population of the community. If you have questions in regards to the Census 2012, please feel free to call the Town Clerk's Office at 508-764-5408. The next item I have, I know that we've, this past fall and into winter season, have been working on doing enhanced enforcement with the, on the recycling. And I have received, actually it was included in the weekly package to members of the council, that from the recycling coordinator, they did look at the recycling rate for the month of November 2011 and compared it to November 2010. And the November 2010 number was 14.72 percent, and the November 2011 number is 20.34. So I recognize that taking a stricter viewpoint to some of the activities regarding the recycling is something that's not always looked at by the community favorably, but I think that the additional enforcement is leading to a better recycling rate, and the town is moving in a manner that I believe has been the public policy of this community and the Board of Health, as well as the council, for an extended period of time. Actually, I just received this also in the office, that it appears that Governor Deval Patrick had put in a request of December 16th to President Barack Obama requesting federal disaster aid be made available to Massachusetts' communities to assist them in the recovery from the October 29th to 30th, 2011 nor'easter. And it does appear that that has been approved. And of the six counties, Worcester County is included in that, and that, like the other storms, would be a 75 percent reimbursement. So we will pursue that, and once I have some figures for how much that would be, we will present that. Just a couple other items on the personnel front. The DPW Director was able to go out and obtain through a competitive process and through examination, he went and obtained two licenses over this past year. One is a grade four water distribution operator, and the other was a grade three water treatment operator. Right now, it's in training because they require some experience before they get the full operator's license. But I think one thing, just for folks to know, is that we actually have contracted service for wastewater and for water. So for the town to have some in-house capabilities in terms of understanding the way these systems work is a tremendous asset to the community, and I just wish to acknowledge and applaud Mr. Daley's effort. There was actually quite a bit of studying that went into that, to take those exams and to pass those, but that is in the best interest of this community, to have that in-house capability. So I do appreciate his efforts on behalf of the community to obtain those water licenses. Two other items on the personnel. One is the Chief of Engineering Services, Maureen Chesler, has submitted her papers for retirement, so she will be departing us. I believe her last workday was last week. She will officially, I guess, be retired as of the, I believe it's the end of February. And I just wish to thank Maureen for her years of service. Anytime that you have a public official that's able to make it over 20 years in a business, it is a tremendous accomplishment, and I just wish to thank Maureen on behalf of the administration for her years of dedication and service. Now, there's another half to that coin. Our Fire Chief is the, also a Chesler, Dick Chesler, and Dick Chesler is currently contemplating retirement. He has not fully decided whether he is going to go or not. Hopefully, he will let us know shortly. In terms of that, I did have an opportunity to go through the files regarding the selection process, and was kind of interested to find that the selection process that the town and the council adopted in March of 2008 only included the deputy chief, the captain, and the lieutenant. And I believe that we should have a selection process for a chief, so I have updated and have a recommendation that I will be submitting to the PPP Subcommittee for its review. It is pretty much modeled on the process that was laid out previously by the town, so I didn't get very creative in that. But I did put additional requirements on because I believe a chief has to have more credentials than the deputy chief. Also, we are making an effort this year to try to improve the job descriptions that we have in town. That is something that will take a long time, but the Fire Chief's position actually does not have a job description. So in the materials that will be presented to PPP, we will also include a job description to make sure that we have that corrected. And I do believe it's important to make sure that we lay out a process and an understanding for those people that are currently in the department for what the process would be for the selection of a new chief. At some point, Mr. Chesler will retire, and I just want to make sure that the community is prepared and ready to go with a process laid out. A couple other items of note on the state contacted us, DCR, in regards to the Randolph Street Pool. It was the state's intent to have the pool work done this past summer. They had several issues that they were contending with, and we fell off the radar screen a little bit. They also ran into some issues at the Randolph Street School, Randolph Street Pool, and they did find some PCB content in the paint, so they have to do additional remediation. So where we've had the Streeter, the Streeter Beach Alternate Program in place for the last two years, I believe that we will be necessitated to do that again this year because the pool will probably not be ready until late August or September, at which point we will not be able to find lifeguards to staff it. So just as a heads up to the council, and they are planning on coming in hopefully in March to give us an update and lay out the process ahead, but it does look like an additional year. They also had to obtain some approvals from Conservation Commission before they could go ahead because that work is within 200 feet of a stream. I promise, this will be the last one. Last year, the council had brought up and wanted to address the question of, do we have enough water in the Southbridge to take care and meet the needs of the Town of Southbridge for not only now, but into the future? And do we have the ability? That we signed an interim agreement with the Town of Charlton to supply them with drinking water. And we were able to successfully put in a grant application with CMR, PC, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, to study and undertake that exact question. They have done, it's fairly lengthy, that's why, in the interest of saving some trees, we did not make copies available. I do have it electronically for members of the council, but basically, it's the Southbridge Drinking Water Supply Assessment of Capacity to Meet Future Demand. In a nutshell, and really very much in a nutshell, it shows that we have sufficient capacity to meet our own needs currently, and to also, if the Town of Southbridge were to be totally built up, consistent with the current zoning in place, that we would also be able to meet that need and have approximately 500,000 gallons of water additional in which to service the Town of Charlton. So I think that the report came back favorable in terms of us continuing our efforts to sell water to the Town of Charlton and that we do have sufficient capacity. There is a companion report to this that is being done by an outside consultant. Having water and having the ability to provide water is one thing. Being able to pipe it from the Connecticut Town, from the Connecticut State Line to various parts of Charlton and other parts of Southbridge is something that we need to look at, and we are, we have contracted with Duberry, an engineering firm, to look at that question and see, do we have, within the current infrastructure, the ability to actually do that? And that report is currently ongoing, so once that comes back. But I think from a resource, we do have a resource that's able to meet our own needs, as well as the needs of our neighbor to the north. I think I've spoken enough. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Agenda item number seven, Swearing In and Presentation. Looks like we have certificates of appreciation for the Toys for Tots program, and this will be presented by the Marine Corps League.
(Inaudible) It's a happy time for us, as you know, the economy, the way it is, and it's just been phenomenal this year. And of course, our base of operations is right here in Southbridge, so that's our reason for being here right now. Our basic reason, we are helpmates for 25th Marine Regiment of Reserves out of Devon's. And because of the Afghanistan situation and all, they've been called up, so we, as former Marines, fit in to the bill for to be helpmates. So you people, thank you, the officials of Southbridge have offered, had given us a place where we can store our toys that we collect. It's in the senior center, which I like to think is Ullamri, but it's a safe place, it's warm, and the toys we have don't freeze. It's ideal, and I can just say, thank you. And it's a happy note, if you, if you could be with us. And, see, we're not, we don't do parties and things like that, toys, make kids happy and that kind of thing, Christmas parties. We do the ones that are really down and out. No fault of theirs, no fault of the, whatever, whether they had a fire in the house, they lost their job, but it's the children at Christmas Eve, and they get up Christmas morning and there's no toys. Now that is, you know, when you see that, it's hot, it breaks your heart. And when you're a part of this and can be a part of this, and you see the parents come to you and hug you, it chokes your throat, it really does. And it makes it all worthwhile, so that's why I'm still the chairman, because it gets me. So anyway, it's appreciation, thank you, and I'm going to read it off, just because, I mean, we have more, we do 16 towns. We do local. If you know someone that has a problem, you tell us, it's done. It's local. And when I say local, any neighboring town, from Southbridge, Servin, Webster, Dudley, Oxford, we handle it. And we've come to a point now, we do 16 towns. And because, we can do it because of your effort for helping us. So I'm going to read off just the Southridge area because that's our base of operation. We have firstly, Southridge Police Department. They had a, asked us if we, you know, we could put a box there, and we did. So we have appreciation for that. And then we have the Southridge Fire Department. I don't know if they're here. If they're not here, we will personally take them there. Good for you. Yeah. We have the Southridge High School. That's all right. We'd be proud to deliver it. And the Southbridge Middle School. Okay? And it's our pleasure to deliver these, believe me. And the Town Clerk's Office, and the town employees, because we had a box downstairs in the Town Hall, and it's those toys that get put in those boxes that get downstairs in the army and gets distributed. Jacob Evans Library Staff, is anybody here from there? We'll deliver it. Now, help me, where is Mike Trombley? I saw him here tonight.
He's here.
Mike, you've been a help with the building down there. I want to say thank you. How is it? These are not just words, these are really from the heart. Lyman Donald, you've been a help to us. You've been on the Veterans Council, has been a real help. And we also have Martell's Cleaners, I don't know if they're here or not, but we'll deliver it. The Vienna Restaurant, they were in on this too. They put on a program for us, and they split some of their profit with us, and that helped us immensely. Thank you. And the Southridge Savings Bank, we'll be, I don't think they're here, but we'll be taking care of them. And there's Norman Ranigan, she called me and gave me a check. She runs a hair salon in Southbridge. We'll be delivering that. And it was Abashon Hardware in Southbridge, and Dick's Hardware in Southbridge. You can see, Southbridge has really come forward for us. And Slim Sewer Service, he helped us. Paul's Automotive. The Southridge Hotel and Conference Center, they had a box down there. And the Southridge Credit Union also, within Southbridge and Servin. So all I can say is, all of you, thank you, and it's been, I could tell you stories that... I had one just two weeks ago, and this person came to me, I'm taking your time, and I don't mean to, but...
It's okay.
She came to me, it was a, I wasn't going to say male or female, it was a woman, and she says, she saw this poster, Toys for Tots, she says, "Are you interested, are you involved in that?" I says, "Yeah." I says, "I'm the chairman." And she, "You wouldn't think so, but I am." And then she told me, she said, "I just had to tell somebody." And she told me a tale of woe, and I'm not going to repeat it because I'll choke up. But her family was, she was in the car with her family, looking back at her home on Christmas Eve, and she went to her folks' house, and there was a bag that said Toys for Tots. And when she was telling me this story, it happened about three years ago, and I vaguely remembered it, but, you know, I try not to read never names and all, it's just the good we do. And boy, that touched me, I, ooh. So, and that was through one of the businesses in town that heard about it, got a hold of one of us. So that's what we do. We don't go out and look for Christmas parties or anything like that. What we do is, if you all know of someone that, you know, is in dire straits, you just tell us. That's where it goes. You tell us, it stops there, we take care of it, and nothing's said. And, believe me, it's working. So this was our best year yet, and I just, I'm amazed. So all I can say is, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berry. That made my day. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item, Agenda Number Eight, Citizens Forum. Do we have any citizens who wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible).
Can we?
(Inaudible).
Okay.
First, I'd like to say Happy New Year to all the council members and councilors that are not there. I would like to say that this past weekend, we started taking care of decorations. We started on the comment, we had an unexpected truck, we felt, and we expected it to leave, so took advantage of it. This past weekend, we, we started taking care of some of the decorations on the comment. We weren't supposed to start till 14, but we had, we did have an unexpected, a few extra hands and a truck. So we got the comment taken down. On the 14th, Saturday, 14th, at 9:00 AM, we're going to take care of the decorations on Main Street. If anybody out there would like to help, give it a effort, we appreciate it. Okay, so it was, it was a great, great couple days, because the decorations done by Lee and George were, they just really helped themselves. We worked very, very hard last year, all year, on these decorations, and it was just progress this year. The only thing that was missing was the snow, the real snow. That's all I want for Christmas, the snow. But anyways, if anybody would like to come, we're meeting on Main Street at 9:00 AM this Saturday, 14th. Thank you and Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you, Monique. Do we have any other citizens who wish to come forward?
Last Friday, we had trash pickup and recycle day, using a trash truck with a pack and load it to recycle, recycle one driver, one man collecting all the recycles, it's still up. I have to watch how they operated, I might, I might dead-end the street. And this, the first thing they do, they back the truck up to dead-end, to the end of the street, and they drive forward. All the trash is, all the trash, all the recycles that be picked up on the right side of the street, the containers end up back at the same location. But the trash will be picked up on the left-hand side of the street. By the time the container is emptied, when we turn halfway across the street, the truck is already rolling down the street to the next pickup, so the container never reaches off, on the side of the street, off the road. So...
Lock yourself up.
So what I have to do, excuse me, is, the driver, the man's doing recycle work, he has to run after the truck, and the container ends up in several feet away from the edge of the road, which is a real pain, because guess what? Another thing is, when he picks up the containers, opens the containers on the right side of the road, the trash, the recycled goods blow out of the container, leaves them on the ground, and when he bypasses it and he continues down the street, guess what? Blows across the street on my property. Now, this event has been happening over and over again, for years and years and years. It's either the trash day or recycle day. Now, I'm also, I'm suggesting is, we, Town of Southbridge has a second coordinator, spent $36,000 to accommodate the health department and prove Casella's recycle program. Well, another thing is, when the recycles are picked up after 12 o'clock on Friday, my section of town offices close, there's nobody there to answer your calls till Monday morning. I'm suggesting that the town consider having, the second man that was, the second person that was appointed to the recycling program be on duty as long as Casella's trucks are rolling in Southbridge, either picking up trash or recycled goods. The key thing is, when you call the Town Hall, the Board of Health, and you listen to the phone, all you hear is, "If this is an emergency, call 911." Who in the world would call 911 regards to trash or recycled goods in the Town of Southbridge? I'm in closing, is three photos that I took after Casella left in front of my house, and show how they operate, and can have these as a souvenir and pass them out to Casella, because I feel there's big improvements needed for Town of Southbridge, and Casella's not doing the best to be able to perform their jobs. Thank you.
Mr. Coett, to your point, somebody had reported to me that they were, they observed trash falling out of trashcans when Casella workers were putting it into the trash trucks recently, on Hamilton Street, actually. And I was concerned, and that they hadn't picked up all the trash that had fallen out. They'd picked up some, left some. And I did go down and speak with Kim this past week, last week, at the end of the week, I was talking to her about a similar, you know, obviously, trash coming out of the trashcans and stuff on the streets while these, you know, these people had been driving by and noticed this less-than-enthusiastic work effort that was being done. So I did, I did mention something, not exactly your situation, but I know that they are, they are concerned about the trash being dumped out of the trash- they are concerned about the trash being dumped out of the trashcans and not being picked up, so, but thank you for bringing it to our attention, so.
The first photo is the photos taken where the Casellas returning the trash recycle container with the lid left open. The second photo is a different angle. The third photo is recycled goods blown across, from across the street onto my property. I have this problem going on every week of the year practically. And when there's a windy day, forget it. Now this past Friday, it was windy. One of the neighbors has one of those old-fashioned, open recycle containers. And guess what? It was windy and all the recycled goods were all over our front property. It was a real, real mess. So I mean, I wish Casella, they have, they have two recycle coordinators, would have a person on duty as long as Casella is picking the trash up in Southbridge, somebody to, you could reach ahead of time because calling Town Hall and trying to reach the Board of Health, hours are closed, on Fridays are new time. It's a poor way of running a business, I tell you. And something should be thought about as soon as possible. Another thing I like to see happen is a windy day pickup. So Southbridge will look like a trash town. And I tell you, we're long overdue and it's about, sometime, it's about time Casella honors the wishes of Town of Southbridge. He's making big bucks off of us and why not receiving nothing in return? Now it's about time he does his part and does what he's supposed to be doing, clean up the streets of Southbridge and make sure his men are well-informed how to pick up trash and how to relocate trash, containers back in proper locations. Because this gentleman here was literally running after the truck because his trash, the recycle bin never reached my side of the street. It was left in the road because he had to run down to the next customer. Now this is for one issue and I have another issue, okay? Excuse me.
Before you go to your next issue, did you want to respond to that, Mr. Clark?
It just, it's interesting that you brought this up. We actually had a meeting last week with the Casella folks, with Eric Jacobson, the gentleman from Green Brown Consulting, to make sure that we were coordinating the efforts to make sure that we do a better job on monitoring their pickup. And it was actually interesting that, I don't think we really effectively communicated in that meeting, was a first step into making sure. If you do get complaints, you know, I can give you my cellphone, Roger, so you can get ahold of me. Because we will, the other thing is, he does not work, Eric Jacobson actually works more of an eight-to-four schedule, so he does not work the evening hours on Thursday night like other staff. Other folks that work up at the landfill don't work the same Town Hall staff hours. But I will coordinate with the, with the police so that way we can have a non-emergency number and we'll have a contact so people can get ahold of Eric. So that's a good, that's a good comment that I realized. We're closed on Friday afternoon, but we're closed on Friday afternoon because we're open late on Thursday night. But those services continue on, that service continues on. So we just need to make sure we do a better job of communicating and to make sure that people know where to go to get that resource available to them. But we are trying to make improvements to that and we are looking for exactly what you're talking about. I've actually gone out myself and done, and did a spot audit. And they actually, we followed a trash truck, sad to say, only did for a short amount of time, but I followed a trash truck. And the guys that were on the back did actually what they were supposed to be doing. So we didn't witness any violations. But that's the kind of work that Eric's going to be doing, he's going to be following, he's going to be monitoring, to try to catch this stuff as it happens and to coordinate with the Casella folks to make sure that that, I mean, that's right there, what you have in your images is what we told them, we don't want to see barrels in the middle of the road. And you have barrels in the middle of the road, so it will be addressed.
The second issue regards to Mr. Town Manager is, last PPP Subcommittee, which I attended, agenda was not given out in advance because your secretary was out sick. And your reply was, she was out sick, and that's why we could not attend, could not receive the information ahead of time. And I expressed my displeasure that evening, how I felt about this issue. Now the thing is, I'm suggesting is, in the future, if, if a person's out sick, I mean, you have several secretaries employed under, in the Town Hall, and you have a previous secretary that worked in your office for many years, that has the ability to type out an additional agenda for that upcoming meeting. Because that meeting was that important, that you rushed through it and the appointment of this police officer, you rushed through it and you had the votes you wanted. I abstained from it because I felt I did not have enough information in front of me to ask the proper questions and was given to me ahead of time. And I just feel is a very, a very poor way of running a meeting. Because you've got to give the councillors, they represent citizens of Southbridge, they don't only work for the Town Hall, they work for citizens of Southbridge, they represent everybody of Southbridge, all the voters. Now, to do your job diligently, you should have made darn sure that they received the information two or three days prior to this event. But no, it was done at the last minute and I feel is the wrong way of doing business. And I sure would like to see improvements in the future because I don't, I will not vote for something that's given to me at the last minute. And the noise and that atmosphere in that room that night there was so loud, you couldn't even figure out what you're reading because it was too noisy, you couldn't concentrate what you're reading. And, see, the thing is, Mr. Manager, you know, familiar with baseball, the first strike with appointment of the recycle coordinator, the second strike, not doing enough diligence of background checks on the appointment of a police officer. And the third strike, you know the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, did you want to address that?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. Some of this was addressed at the Subcommittee meeting. The agenda that was distributed, that was distributed several days before indicated that the material would be presented at the meeting. So there was no attempt to confuse people. The process that we utilize is we send out a package on Thursday night, the interviews were done Friday morning, and we were attempting to recruit people and have those done in order to try to get to an academy so we could get the officers into an academy. But the interviews were done after the packages went out. We told people that we would have, we had the candidates there in case there were any specific questions. You know, in terms of hiring people, hiring people is a difficult process. You have to have a certain level of trust. You certainly go back and do as much verification as you can in terms of the background, in terms of people. And I, we didn't catch everything that we should. And the material that we did come up has been addressed, and I believe it's been addressed in an appropriate manner. But, you know, I'm not going to say that everything is always done perfectly. In terms of the multitudes of staff, you know, I was told that my department had a $500,000 budget. It's not 500,000, it's about 250. I have one, one full-time staffer. And it was that one full-time staffer that got ill. I have two part-time staffers that combined get to a second person. Sometimes people see people in the office. We use volunteer help, the senior work-off people, we use several of them to accomplish what needs to be accomplished. So I just, I don't mind taking criticism, I'm not perfect, I never advertise myself to be perfect, we do the best we can. But I do disagree that to say that something was left out intentionally is a fallacy. We told people what the process was going to be, we told people we had a tight timeline, and we adhered to what we said. We did have a snafu because my staffer fell ill. My primary staffer, 50% of my office staff was lost to me. Things are going to happen when you, when you lose a staffer for a period of time.
Mr. Town Manager, isn't it possible to have somebody...
Mr. Kowett, that, no, you've had your, your five minutes, more than so. And no, we're not going to engage in that.
I'm not.
No. If you have anything further, I suggest to, with the Town Manager, make an appointment, go in and discuss it with him, please. Okay? Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to come forward for Councillor's Forum?
Sean Moriarty, 44, Magellan. Basically, I'm here usually, I know everybody here is used to being challenged, this is a bit more of a friendly challenge. Every year, the Southbridge Little League does a number of different types of fundraisers. This particular year, one of the big fundraisers we're doing is three parts. We're basically trying to see as the faces and the leadership of the town, but also everybody else, the community, et cetera, see if you can find a way to take part in any one, two, or three parts of this fundraiser. January 28th, the league has, is going to be using Charlton Street School for three different fundraisers that are all combining as one. It starts off with just a, an indoor wiffleball tournament, about 10 teams is what we're looking for. After that, there is a spaghetti dinner. And then there's also basically a game show night, Minute to Win at Jeopardy, Family Feud, those sort of things. Different prizes throughout the day. Game Show Night includes cash prizes for whoever wins, which is always a good motivation. If you take part in one part, that's great, if you take part in multiple, that's even better. The more you do, the less you pay in a way, you get a discount. So if you did the both ends, all three parts, basically the dinner's free. So basically just trying to pass that out and kind of spread the word. And hope to see at least a few of you there. I know a few at different points have been involved with the Little League, I know some of you have family that are involved. I believe Councilor Spinelli's son-in-law is one of our coaches the last few years, actually one of the better coaches we have. So just passing that out and hope to see some folks there.
Thank you very much, Sean. Do you have any extra copies that you might want to leave at the table out in the hall?
I can bring some, I plan on coming down and doing the same spiel to the School Committee tomorrow.
Okay.
And it's also on, thank you for reminding me, it's also on the league's website, which is just southbridgelittleleague.com. The league also has a little Facebook page, things like that, but southbridgelittleleague.com has all the information on there as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other citizens wishing to come forward? Okay. We'll move on to agenda item number nine, Councillor's Forum. Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wish everybody a prosperous 2012. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Spinelli?
I'm going to ditto Councillor McDonald.
Thank you. Councillor Vandal?
I've got a problem. Down on Worcester Street, between Henry Street and Martin Ave, there's two houses down there that the shrubbery has grown way over to the, way over the sidewalk. People can't get by the sidewalk, like if you've got a carriage or anything. Nobody can walk by there, the bushes are that far out, so they need to be trimmed.
By the homeowners.
By who?
The homeowners.
Homeowners. Oh yeah, definitely the homeowner. And I'd like to wish my wife, who's sitting at home, a happy birthday. Thank you very much.
That's very nice. Actually cute. Thank you. Councillor Marcoochi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have just a few quick items this evening on our weekly reports. I noticed from the Department for the landfill that Triano Truck was rejected on January 3rd because the load contained unprocessed C and D material. And if my memory recalls, since I've been on council, I believe this is probably their third, second or third offense. And through you, Madam Chair, to the Town Manager, Mr. Clark, do we, or does the Board of Health, how do they follow up on that and what do we do for the repeat offenders?
Well, I did look at this, this question was asked previously. Under the rules that the town has engaged in, what we have laid out and is administered by the Board of Health, that if a, if a driver comes in and brings a load that is rejected, that load is actually then just sent away. Now, we don't have, at this point, any kind of fine mechanism or anything of that nature. But the driver is prohibited from coming back to the facility for a month. If the driver were to do it again, then they are banned for, for life. So they have basically a two, two times that they can do it, and the second time is then a lifetime. It is, right now, incumbent upon the driver to make sure that he gets it, he or she gets it right. So in that, in terms of the costs, it does obviously incur some significant cost to those companies to have to go find a new site, to have to dump that in. I have had preliminary discussions with both the Health Department and the Casella folks to say that, you know, I have a problem with that in terms of, we're going around and we issue citations of up to $250 for people failing to comply with our own bylaws regarding trash. And even though it is costly and it's a punishment of a month of not coming back to that landfill for that driver and potentially that driver's livelihood, that I think we need to do more and have some kind of finding mechanism. Each of the trucks and each of the drivers, though, is licensed and we do have a roster of who comes up to the landfill and when they come up. So we can watch and observe to make sure that there's no repeat offenders because we will have the truck on a, on a watch list. And that the gentleman that inspects each of the trucks that comes in does have that roster available to him.
So when something like this happens, they're looking at the company but also the driver?
Primarily the driver.
So technically, if Triano or Triano has, say, 15 drivers, they could realistically send 15 drivers with loads that, I mean, how, you know, our landfill's been in existence for how many years? Obviously, they have to know what we accept and what we don't accept. And it just seems like it's always a chronic problem with this specific company. And I don't know if it's something that we as the council has to enforce, or it's something that the Board of Health really needs to stick its teeth in and really be aggressive on this issue. Because like I said, I think this is either the second or third time that I've seen this name come up with, with this company.
Right. One of the things, because I have been looking at this since you've brought it up, and one of the things that came out to me that is kind of interesting is that the DEP sets a criteria for what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. And there is a human element that when someone calls in, if they call in a certain item that they believe is acceptable, if they're then told, yes, that's an acceptable item, and they show up at the landfill, but our landfill monitor reads the regulation differently, then that load would be rejected. So there is, I mean, as you can imagine, the trash business includes a wide range of different materials that come in. And unfortunately, there's an awful lot of human element to this, that people that, drivers that come may assume that the load is a load that is acceptable, and when they get here, it's up to our folks to make the determination as to whether it's a banned item or not. And there have been times in which our folks would turn them away, and then when we check with DEP to see what is acceptable and what is not acceptable, because they do change that, I don't want to say on a daily basis, but they do change that depending upon the material and the study that they do on it, that there is some possibility of material bringing, being brought up there that the driver honestly thinks is the right material because he brought it from the host, the host community. And then when they get there, a determination is made. So I wish I could say that it was really simple and cut and dry, but unfortunately, there is some element of interpretation, and that is just really, we're trying to interpret the DEP rules for what is acceptable and what are not acceptable. And they literally can be changing those depending upon when someone puts an inquiry into DEP and says, "Is this material acceptable?" DEP makes a determination, and then they, they bring it in. But I wish I could say it's, it's not just a simple list of, this is acceptable, this is not acceptable. There is, there is some gray. So when you see what you're seeing on these reports, I think it's actually a good sign that we are challenging and saying that we don't think this item is, is acceptable or not.
Oh, I agree with you, Mr. Clark. I appreciate the reports. I just wish we could do, do more about it. You know? I don't have that much faith in the DEP because let's face it, in the state of Massachusetts, there's not that many landfills, so, you know, I don't have great faith in the DEP because I think, like I said, there's less landfills and garbage has to go somewhere. So, I just wish we could be a little more aggressive on this, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Just to add to that, is it possible, Mr. Clark, that the next time you do have a chance... Just to add to that, is it possible, Mr. Clark, that the next time you do have a chance, a meeting with Casella, that maybe we could discuss, or you could discuss with them the possibility that if one particular company has numerous violations, I'm really not interested in who they put behind the wheel of the, of the truck. If it's the same company, I would say three times and you are out as a company. And, and that, you know, because those are three times that they've been caught. And, and your point is well-taken, Counselor. I'm curious as to how many times the people up at the landfill might have misread what is in those, in those loads, you know, misinterpreted to our disadvantage, what is in those loads. So if, if you're a particular company who's bringing, whose drivers are bringing up, you know, a load and it's three times that that particular company is, is, you know, guilty, then I would say, you're gone. And if something is sent to those companies, maybe they'll be a lot more careful before they, they send those loads up. I'm, I'm just, you know, I understand the driver aspect, but I think the company itself needs to be held accountable as well. So maybe a discussion with Casella about that would be a prudent thing to do. Thank you for bringing that up, Counselor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'm going to add my, this past Friday, my experience with Casella to Mr. Cowett's. It was recycling and trash day. I had a cardboard box that I had broken down and it didn't fit inside of my tote. It was on top of it. And then I had two pizza boxes that were on top of my trash because it didn't fit inside my trash container, so it was on the top. Not on the ground, they were both right there. And I watched the truck. They took half of my recyclables. They didn't even dump the entire tote out. And they emptied my trash and they left the cardboard box and the two pizza boxes there on the street. I don't get it. I really don't. It's either recyclable or not. It was trash day and recyclable day. So either way, take the boxes. So now it's all in the tote, along with the half-filled tote, and they can figure it out. That's the way I feel. Figure it out. I don't know. So that was, that was this past Friday for me, too. Usually, it's only, you know, I have to go chasing down the road from my, my cover to my trash container. Fine. But this Friday I did, I, I saw, and I was, I was, I was upset as Mr. Cowett was also. If I can just take a minute, to say a few words about Maureen Chesla. I worked in this town hall for 11 years and part of that time, Mrs. Chesla wasn't Mrs. Chesla. And part of the time she was. Maureen is the quintessential public employee. I think we've lost a lot more, I know we've lost a lot more than just a, our engineering person. Maureen has the town's history. She's a wealth of knowledge. I know other communities call her for, for help with certain things. I'm glad that she's, she's retiring on her terms. It was not so long ago that I felt that she was not being treated very fairly and I'm glad that we were able to take care of that and fix that. I hope, Maureen, if you're watching, enjoy yourself, enjoy your family. You and your husband both have given a big chunk of your lives to this community. And I want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I echo your words. Thank you. Counselor Clements?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to applaud the Marines and the Toys for Tots program. I had the privilege to attend the event at Vienna, which was, which was well-attended and appeared to be a success from all standpoints. And the work, you guys deserve the, the plaques of accreditation because you go out there, you give up your time, your energy, and you do the hard work that many of us aren't doing. It's easy maybe to buy that toy, make that donation, but certainly what you guys put forward is wonderful and I applaud you and all of you for, for taking your time to take care of those who need more. So thank you. And I would also wish everybody a great 2012. In terms of Saturday, just following up on Mrs. Manna, we will meet at the Old Friendly's parking lot, basically. If you can come, if you do have a truck, if you do want to give us a little bit of time and energy, an hour, three hours, whatever it takes. Hopefully, the snow will stay at bay and we can get everything done. I do want to take this time also to thank again Lenny Laporte and his crew for helping with the lights this year, everybody who made a donation, the Southbridge Savings Bank for always being very generous with their location for us, and, and really all the volunteers. This past Saturday, we did have a great group of boys. If you happen to see the show, guys, thank you, kudos to you. It was Sergeant Dinghy's, part of his basketball team. My understanding is some of them will be out to help again this weekend. And we also had some, some wonderful teens doing some community service from the, from the probation department. And they were excellent. I'm not sure what they're working off, but for us, they were, they were wonderful volunteers and we really appreciated having their help this past weekend. So it just shows you, there's, there's really good people out there, whether it's collecting toys or whether it's giving of their time on a chilly Saturday or Sunday morning. We've got some great people and we've got a great town. Oh, I'll point out, too, I did notice the sign on Main Street. I'd heard rumor for quite a while that there'd be a new, another new business, another new business. Because we've had quite a few, small maybe, but another business on the corner of Hamilton. It looks like it's a computer business. We had heard rumor, like I said, for a few months and apparently the sign and product is there. Haven't had a chance to go in, but certainly the only way anybody can survive is if we patronize them and, and utilize their service. So I encourage everybody to take a look around at what we've got here in our town and buy home, you know, stay home first, buy home, shop locally. So we appreciate whoever it is that started up another, another new business here in town. And I believe that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Upon pain of getting killed when I get home, I'm still going to do it. 2012 rang itself in around quarter past 12 with me having to call the ambulance due to a little slip and fall by Dad at home. And I cannot tell you how impressed I was by the unbelievably rapid response of the fire department, EMTs, police department. I didn't even have a chance to do much. They were right there. And I was very impressed and very pleased, after all of it took place, to think that if he really had been in dire need, he was in excellent hands. Oftentimes, we take that for granted as we drive up and down Elm Street. And sometimes we actually think we'll never need the services of our fire department, our paramedics, our EMTs, our ambulance service, our police. And I can assure you, they are ready. If you need them, they're there for you. So I'd like to thank all of the people that were involved in coming to my home that evening. You really just didn't restore my faith. I've always had faith, but I, I never had to use it. So now I know I can put my money where my mouth is. I know that we do have the finest emergency people you could ever ask for. So thank you very, very much. I appreciate what you did and so does my father. Thank you. With that, I also want to say that in listening to Mr. Berry this evening and what you were saying about all of the people and all of the businesses that were willing to put boxes out and to do things to help the Toys for Tots, it brought me back to my younger years and in also listening to the late Laurent McDonald, who used to talk about all of the volunteerism in this community. It's wonderful to hear it in the present and not just in the past. So I want to thank you so much for all of you, all of the things that you do. Makes me very proud to be the daughter of a Marine and I, I thank you. And I know that the people that you have serviced have enjoyed what you have done, but I have a feeling you've probably enjoyed it just a little bit more than they do. So thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to move on to our next meeting date. Counselor Clements?
It pleases the Counsel. We're looking at Monday, January 23rd, 2012, 7:00 PM here in the chambers.
Excellent. Thank you. And now, Agenda Item Number 11 would be adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Good night.